Good evening, everyone. I would like to welcome you to the September twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty four Board of Education meeting. We are calling the meeting to order at seven oh three P M. And if everyone could please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. A reading of meeting notice. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted. Should we start over? Okay. The New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend the meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interest is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provision of the Act, the Verona Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published in the Star Ledger, posted with the Township of Verona and the Verona Education Association. Postings of this meeting setting forth the time, location, and agenda were posted at the Verona Board of Education office and on the Verona Public Schools District website. Copies of tonight's agenda and resolutions have been made available to the public via the Board of Education website. Mister Cruz, if you could please call attendance.
Mister Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Frisella?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar? Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mister Boone?
Yes.
We have quorum. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our agenda, on to routine matters. I need a motion. Oh, wait. Not on that. Yeah, never mind. I need a motion to approve our minutes from our September tenth, two thousand and twenty four meeting. Motion by?
I'll second.
Motion by Mrs. Farrar, seconded by Mister Boone. Any discussions? Mister Cruz, if you could please call roll.
Mister Walker?
Yes.
Mrs. Frisella?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mister Boone?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Now moving on to our superintendent's report by Miss Diane Di Giuseppe.
Good evening. My report this evening is around our year two strategic plan goals and our and which also includes our academic goals. So I'm going to share my screen. Nope. Hang on a second. I apologize. So I know it's really small on the on the screen for the board, but these can be found at Strategic Plan website or link on our website, and it would be Strategic Plan Year Two. So this, these are the goals that are updated each year. We made a decision when we've completed the strategic planning process that creating five years' worth of goals is unrealistic and would require a lot of editing. So instead, we're doing year by year. The goal areas stay the same. So for Goal Area One, improving student outcomes or improving student achievement, the overarching goals are the same, the goal statement is the same, just the activities that were are being updated each year. So our academic goals are outlined in a separate document because we go by grade level and school. So I will quickly go through this. So if we look at our academic goals for grade three, and the way this is organized is that I look at grades three and four in our each elementary school, and we break out English, language arts, and math. And this is really based on multiple forms of data, including NJSLA from two thousand and twenty four. Although we did go back, Doctor Miller and the principals and I went back and looked at even two thousand and twenty three and two thousand and twenty two. Before that, we didn't have a couple of years because of the pandemic. But so before that, it goes back to two thousand and nineteen, and in all honesty, it's really not worth comparing back to two thousand and nineteen. So much has changed since then. The test is not the same. It was Park. Now it's NJSLA. So really just comparing apples to apples here. So if we look at the way this is organized, and I promise I'm not going to go through every grade level. I'm just giving you an opportunity to see how it's organized and how we came up with some of these percentages. So because grade three at Brookdale is only one section, there's only twenty two students. It's a four percent desired improvement. Doesn't seem like there's a lot, but that's a good number of students that would be moving into the next proficiency area. So with the NJSLA, there are five proficiency levels. And there is not meeting grade levels. I'm sorry. Approaching, meeting, and exceeding. So we're what we're reporting. So for grade three in two thousand and twenty four, seventy seven percent of our students met or exceeded grade level standards on the English Language Arts NJSLA. Since grade two doesn't take NJSLA, all we can compare is that in that cohort on the MAP test, which has a prediction correlation to NJSLA, eighty two percent of those students are predicted to be able to meet or exceed grade level standards. So looking at all we have for grade three, so in this case, we're comparing grade three to grade three because while MAP is predictive, it's not hundred percent. So we use it to help us determine, but if we at four percent here, we're looking at pushing grade three students to eighty one percent meeting or exceeding grade level standards. I'm sorry. And for grade four, eighty two percent of our students last year on grade four met or exceeded grade level standards and seventy seven percent of grade three. So in this case, we're looking at that cohort, not the grade level because these kids that were eighty two percent meeting or exceeding are now in grade five. So if we looked at the grade three students that did well last year, we're looking at increasing that to eighty four percent. Same thing with math. We're looking at, and we can't do a cohort comparison in grade three because we really don't have apples and apples. But we can for grade four. So for grade four, fifty nine percent of our third graders were meeting or exceeding grade level standards in grade four math, grade three math, and looking at moving six percent of those to get us to sixty five percent. And that's the way we work across Forest Avenue School, same ideology, same methodology at Ben Brown. And you'll notice that for the second year in a row, we're actually looking at individual grade levels and individual students, which is why percentage increase are different from school to school because we're looking at how do we, how do we improve, how do we meet kids where they are and move those kids into the next proficiency level. Landing Avenue again. At Whitehorn, we have grades five through eight. And grade eight for and not for English Language Arts, but for math, this is tricky. So let me explain how we did math here. Grade seven is a mix of accelerated math and non-accelerated math. So I think they call it above and on grade level here. So you have grade seven on grade level and grade seven above grade level. So this percentage is a mix of those two grade levels. In grade eight, the students that were above grade level, most of them don't take grade eight math. They take Algebra One. So we can't do necessarily cohort in this case. So we are comparing out the grade eight to grade eight. If I'm not making sense, ask me because I will explain. For the high school, we are looking at a cohort improvement. So we're looking at fifty nine percent of our grade eight students performed at meeting or exceeding grade level standards while they were in grade eight. They are now ninth graders. We'd like to see an improvement to seventy percent. And for Algebra One, this is where we saw a big jump last with last year. We went, we improved by fourteen percent in Algebra One last year. It was a huge jump. Our teachers were working in a professional learning community. They were looking at individual student scores. They were looking at areas where students were performing well, areas where they weren't. They really tailored the curriculum and differentiated for kids, and we were able to move fourteen percent into the next proficiency level. So we're looking to repeat that. And for geometry, we are also, now again, we're not doing a cohort move here because this, these are two different groups of kids. These are not grade nine geometry are kids that came out of algebra in eighth grade and grade eight algebra are kids that came out of algebra, out of pre-algebra. So we're looking to improve by twenty percent and get sixty seven percent of our, oh, they shouldn't say grade four. I'm sorry. I'll fix that. So that is our academic goals. So our strategic, other strategic goals are really, I'm not going to go through them. They're probably similar to what we did last year, like we're providing foundations training to grade three teachers. We're continuing to expand online platforms for for professional development. We are moving into a district-wide instructional model. We trained our principals and supervisors last year. Our teachers are receiving training on the twenty seventh and ongoing. We are looking to collect and review and provide feedback on lesson planning using a new template that aligns with the new instructional model. We are looking to continue to incorporate professional learning communities at all levels to get that really strong cohort vision of where are our kids now and how do we move them into the next proficiency level? And just even in our own standards, improve their their outcomes. We are still doing intensive standards review. We were just talking in the hallway, Mrs. Farrar and I and Mrs. Frisella and I, that for English Language Arts, these standards are new to everybody. So this would be new standards for English Language Arts in grades K through twelve. And the math standards are revised. Science have not been revised, but the science standards are difficult standards. They just are, and just in general. And social studies are new last year, so they're still. And we know health and P E are relatively new. Actually, I'm sorry, social studies were new in two thousand and twenty with the Health and Physical Education and World Languages. So we've been working with those standards for four years now. Well, three years actually because they rolled them out a year after. So just continue with math interventions. The the WIN program at the middle school. We are implementing iReady with students in academic support with our special, our students with with IEPs, which is another support that will address some deficiencies there. We are continuing to develop a common schedule across all schools in the elementary world. And we are, we expanded and adapted the MAP growth assessments at the high school. We changed up the test that the students take that's more applicable to our our curriculum. And then we have twenty first century college ready standards. So we are continuing with the Gifted and Talented Program, changing, providing different opportunities in the library curriculum, continuing with conflict resolution and peer mediation, continuing with advisory at the middle school, continuing to push for new dual enrollment opportunities at the high school. We have a lot of advanced placement opportunities. Dual enrollment opportunities are equally beneficial to students because it's a rigorous environment that is not necessarily the AP moneymaker. I mean, moneymaker for AP, not for us. Expanding Option Two at the high school, continuing Senior Capstone, Year Two with the LLD program, and Year Two with our Council, College and Career Counseling Center. With regard to social and emotional learning, we are continuing to utilize Care Plus NJ. We actually are getting a new counselor at the high school. We will be going through the school climate initiative. And and I know that there's, Mister Walker has brought up some concern with that. That's the climate survey. You didn't love it.
Oh, yeah.
See, I listen to you, but it is the, it is the baseline data that we have. So we are implementing the Positivity Positivity Project at HBW and at the elementary schools through the counseling office, the school counseling office at both schools. We are continuing to work on on creating an environment of diversity, equity, inclusion, belonging. We have some student training happening on the twenty seventh and Election Day, which is November five. And with teachers as well. Social Justice One O One, I think, is what they're doing first, and then they'll be working with our kids as well. I think they're going to do a parent night. I have to get Miss Doctor Miller to elaborate on that, the next education committee. And then Community and School Relationships, I'm very excited to unveil our new district website, which is going a little more slowly than we thought, getting it up and running. But we don't want to just bring everything that's on our current website onto the new website because then it's just going to be the same website with a different look. So it's a little slow go. We we do continue to improve our current website, removing outdated information and updating our calendars, keeping our news up to date, and continuing to encourage our students to volunteer for civic engagement. We have not decided what parent academies we're going to be offering this year, but we will continue to offer parent academy as well. That is my report for this evening.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you. Go ahead.
I I have a couple of questions and maybe a comment. First of all, comment in no particular order, the, I really can't say enough good things about the dual enrollment. Not only does it guide away from, you know, the AP cash cow, if you will, but it's also a huge savings for families, and it's a huge way to get a jump ahead. I see numerous students tell anecdotally how they're starting their freshman year of college pretty much with foot in the door of being a sophomore because of some of the, taking the advantage of these programs. So strongly encourage parents, if they haven't, to really investigate these opportunities. It is asking a lot of our students, but I think it's in an environment that they are put in to succeed. So I really appreciate the fact that we are pursuing these more focus.
Yeah, and I have to say, we have, our senior English is a dual enrollment, and we only get about ten percent of our parents that that opt to purchase the credits. So it it's really inexpensive. And yeah, you just got to sell that better.
Yeah, once you're looking at, yeah, what you do is put a college, I mean, if if there's a way we can put a college cost calculator. So if you take that super class at, say, Syracuse, how much are you, would you be paying if you go to Syracuse as a freshman? That's one way to get parents to pay attention, hopefully. A question, and I don't want to be overtly critical here because I I probably misunderstood something you said. On the, on the math performances in the elementary school, the numbers, we're definitely seeking areas of improvement that are unrealistic. My question is, how concerned, well, two, two questions off of this. How concerned should we be that that some of these percentages are quite on the low side? And then also, I I do see some disparities, like, for example, Brookdale grade two is all the way up at ninety five percent relative to the third graders who are at fifty nine percent. And and like I said, I might have misunderstood the way you you framed this.
No, well, grade two is a MAP assessment, so that's slightly different than the actual NJSLA. So we use it as a predictor to predict how students are going to do on NJSLA. And in certain grade levels, it's pretty spot on, and in certain grades, it's really not. So it's we we can't customize our MAP assessments. They come. That's the way they are. If our curriculum may not go in the same sequence, and and that we see happen. So let's say for grade three, the MAP assessment that the students take in the fall, winter, and spring may be better aligned to our curriculum versus grade four. It may be out of sequence. The kids ultimately by the end of the year will show a big improvement, but they may not, this is last year's spring. So I'm not sure with with this particular one, and I'm new to MAP. So MAP is is, I'm still learning what a RIT score is and how it's how it's graded. But in grade four, that's actual NJSLA. So it's not MAP. So ninety five in grade two, in grade three, that was actual fifty nine percent performed at meeting or exceeding grade level standards. With regard to your concerns that some of the lower scores, yes, you should be concerned. I'm concerned. We are district factor I grouping and and in some areas, we measure out with the state, and in some areas, we measure out above the state. We should be above the state. It is only one test, right? Let's put it out there. It's one test. It is a test that we can kind of estimate how well we're doing compared. It's the only thing we can to compare to schools around us or schools that we think we should be comparing to. I I do think for the most part, there's, anecdotally, there are reasons our curriculum may not be aligned. We've not done a lot of triangulation of our curriculum to the those items on the state test scores. I can tell you, last year we did that. We had a professional development, small professional development sessions across the year with our ELA teachers where we looked at, here is our evidence, our evidence statements from the state. So this is at each question that was asked where we were relative to the state. What do those questions look like? Giving teachers sample questions to see what are we, what are we missing? And we improved in every single grade level. So I I think it's just, it's a misalignment. Our teachers are great teachers.
Right, yeah.
It's not that. And our students are are good kids, and the parents are supportive parents. The disconnect here is what is missing, and I think it's just alignment of our curriculum.
Does that, does that come down to, oh, I just jumped out of the slide deck. The I think it was at the fourth grade level, I noticed a significant difference between on the NJSLA from Brookdale grade four math to a little bit or decent bit lower on Forest to a big drop when you get to Brown. And I'm wondering, is that just an anomaly that we're seeing? Kind of back to that missile line?
No, I think what it is, and and this is, that's a great question. I'm glad I can speak to that. Brown has a much greater population of students that have, that's where our LSS program is, are are more significantly challenged students with disabilities, and that's also where our ESL population is.
Okay.
So if you're an elementary student and you are a multi-language learner, you're at Brown. So there is reasons why the scores there are slightly lower. I will say that Brown was one of the only schools this year that hit the big building goal of improvement last year. It was really wonderful.
I'm done. Thank you.
So first, I'm so happy to see aggregated data in there when we're making some goals. So thank you for that. It's really important. So I have kind of two questions. One, I want to just make sure that I understood. You said that we're using the iReady benchmark for IEP students in the middle school? Just in the middle school?
I, I believe, you know what, let me, before I answer that, let me check with Mrs. Kohler.
Okay.
I know they entered it into the middle school part of the strategic plan, whether we're using it across the district. I think it is just.
So is that, so what we'll kind of find out is if that, I'm wondering if that is just for a pop, like a population of students? If it's something, and also if it's the iReady benchmark assessment that we're using, because I know they have a lot of different programs. And really what my my original question was, kind of just going back to MAP. So I do know that the MAP assessments, the reading passages in them are very heavy. I've seen personally, you know, almost a full page of a reading for a second grade student, which is really difficult for them to do. So sometimes when we see those discrepancies, I think between MAP and NJSLA, it is simply because the passage is, they're they're lost before they get halfway through, and that's very common for a second grade reader, third grader, and on. But
MAP is given from second to third grade in reading? Someone told me that second grade, it could be read to them. And in third grade, it they have to read it.
They have to read it themselves. Yeah. So there is the option to listen. And then obviously, though, if a student has an IP, they can hear it. But yes, at some points, that that is the case. But even I know for like a fifth grade MAP assessment, that the passages are incredible. I've been shocked to see how long they are. With that being said, my question was, how, what does our contract with MAP look like right now? And is this something that we can take a look at to see if perhaps there's a better benchmark assessment that we can use? I think, you know, in light of the fact that we're using aggregated data, that we're starting to have the evaluate, you know, the new evaluation system that we're we're unpacking standards, I feel like we're beginning to do a lot of this really good work, where, you know, where we see the needle move. And while I like MAP, I think that there are some other programs out there that really pinpoint skills that really allow teachers, and they're, and they're a lot more teacher friendly, really. MAP can be kind of difficult. It's clunky for teachers to use. So I'm just wondering if we could take a look at that contract when it's up, and then if we can maybe.
I think it's an annual contract.
Okay. And then if we are using iReady anywhere, if maybe, because again, like now I'm wondering if we're pilot, like if maybe we're just testing in a group, and if maybe we can look into something like an iReady. There are, there are a couple of different ones, but again, they offer more in, I think, you know, the data that we're able to pull. And oftentimes, they offer more in like resources for students for interventions. And then my other question was, you know, looking at those math scores, again, I know that we switched to a new math program in the elementary school. I want to say maybe four or five years ago. I think it was a Singapore math.
Yes, it was Singapore math.
And is this something that we feel, you know, do we have enough data? Or are we looking at the data to say, okay, this program is or is not working? And possibly we're going to look at a shift or we're not, like, have we, where are we in that?
I really, I am too new here to make that jump because they did roll it out during the pandemic where training teachers, and it was a very difficult rollout, and I understand that why they made that decision. But the reality of it is, is nobody was paying attention during the pandemic because we were dealing with the pandemic. Right? And we had kids in hybrid, and some kids were at home, and we all know what happened. We were all there. We lived it, right? But I wouldn't, I would say the real training has begun since the pandemic ended. And this is a different way of thinking about teaching mathematics, right? So and unfortunately, because of our budget situation, we lost our math coach to the one rift position last year. And Mrs. Gessario was making strides in a lot of helping other teachers, and that was a shame, but we really have a budget crunch.
Yeah.
Yeah. So
And it's not, I just want to be clear. It's not that I'm saying, I don't know about the program to say that we should or should not. It's not that at all. It's just more of, you know, if we're looking at benchmark assessments, if we're looking at the data and kind of like just.
I think we need more time with this particular math program before we make a decision because of when it was rolled out. But I will tell you, it is based in best practice. When you're talking about teaching kids mathematics, you want to start, you want to follow concrete representational abstract. And when you start teaching an algorithm, you're starting with abstract. And so that's old fashioned math. You you teach a student, this is the algorithm that you're going to use, plug the numbers in and solve. They can memorize that.
Yeah.
But they don't really understand the concepts behind it. So Singapore math, everyday math, lots, there's lots of programs out there that do things like this. It really is a best practice in theory. It's just a matter of how well we support our teachers with their understanding of how to roll it out.
Right. And also, if we are, if we are, like, if we're looking at a new benchmark system, we're able to get that like very targeted data for teachers, that's where interventions can start to happen in small group and.
Yeah, and I don't even know what MAP costs us because we were already well into MAP. But I will tell you, that program that I was just talking about that we used was purchased, it's no longer professors and run by teachers. It was purchased by Pearson. So it's probably more expensive than it was when we used it. Pearson, the the big animal.
Pay enough for college books for those guys.
I have a question.
Sure.
We've been here for a little while now, and we have a new member sitting at our board. So when are we going to be introduced to this awesome student rep that I want to learn about?
Well, we were going to introduce him when it's now.
Well, I can't wait.
Okay. Well, then I think that's the last question.
I didn't want to hear about any more data, huh?
It's not Jack.
Oh.
That's not Jack.
I apologize, ma'am.
Yeah, they're on order. You want to? If you do some.
Well, should we just skip, we'll skip, and we'll go over to, so we're going to go.
Yeah, I'm done. I was done a few minutes ago.
Our new student rep, I would. Our new student rep, I would like to introduce Ryan Go. Thank you for being here. Thank you. Congratulations. And we look forward to working with you. And if you would like to give out your report, feel free.
Okay, good afternoon. With the school year ramping up as we approach October, there are a multiple, a multitude of things that are have and have been and are going on at the high school. On Tuesday, September seventeenth, the club fair where students learned about the various clubs offered at VHS was immensely successful. There was a great amount of interest among students in pursuing activities, new and old, and a lot of engaged discussions between club representatives and the rest of the student body. I know for me personally, as an active member of many clubs and an officer in a few, I saw an incredible amount of signups and a great amount of new and of new members across the board. On Friday, September twenty fourth, student council elections occurred and voting was conducted with respective grade officers and the student executive board members being elected along with a plethora of non-officer student representatives. It was great to see the amount of participation and effort, especially in the underclassmen that was put into campaigning and speeches. The student council was looking to support childhood cancer awareness in the high school on September thirtieth by setting up donations and encouraging students to wear yellow. College visits have started up and upperclassmen have been attending such meetings to prepare for college and to learn the inner workings of a specific school, its majors, social life, classes and expectations. Athletics wise, fall sports have still been going strong despite minor hiccups with success occurring at the home football game against Newark Lidget Academy, a win in boys soccer against Newark Central and a victory for the girls tennis team in counties and many more. I'm definitely looking forward to continue to see what Verona can accomplish athletically. And more senior nights are to come through the end of this month and into October. In the world of performing arts, this past Saturday, the Verona High School marching band, the Marching Moon and White, took third place in competition at Roxbury High School with the competitive debut of the show, One With the Universe, with more to come further down the season. And production of the VHS fall drama, The Odyssey, has begun this week as well. And lastly, this week, on the twenty sixth, we are looking forward to having back the school night. I just want to thank everyone for being welcoming and I'm looking forward to having a great school year and I and I hope I can step into the shoes and live up to the legacy of all my esteemed predecessors, Jack and Reese. Thank you. That's all.
Well, if tonight was any indication, thumbs up.
Well, and my, and since Mr. Waka was so rude not to ask, can you, you tell us what what grade you're in and what, you mentioned all the clubs that you're in, but what's your favorite? Or among your favorite? Yeah, I don't want to put you too much on the.
Okay, so my name is Ryan Guo. I am currently in the class of twenty twenty six, which is the junior class. And honestly, there's so much I do, which I can't really pick, so.
Boy, this is a budding politician, isn't it?
Well, what's what's scary for me is that my son's in the same grade as yours. And I didn't know any of the things that's going on in the high school that you just told me. So I I don't know what that says about me or him, but thank you.
And now welcome and feel free to reach out to Pam and myself, obviously, anyone on the board. And and if you wanted to join any of our committees, I know Reese got involved in some of the committees. No pressure to feel that you must because it's an extra meeting every few weeks, but but you know, if you have a burning desire to be part of the policy committee or something, reach out. I'm sure we can make it happen.
Well, you're giving them the easy one.
Thank you. Thank you, Ryan, for your report. It was very thorough and thank you for joining us. We're happy to have you. Anyone else have any questions or comments for Ryan? Moving on to our business administration administrator report with Mr. Cruz.
Yes, thank you. Good evening. I appreciate the opportunity again to provide a brief update. In finance, I'm pleased to report that we've received the July Secretary's Treasurers and Transfer Report on this agenda and they're all in agreement. Next week, the board office was going to continue to collaborate with our auditors for the fiscal year two thousand twenty four review process. We anticipate that the completed report will be ready to be presented to the board at the December board meeting. I'm also would like to, at this time, encourage families that qualify for free lunch to continue applying. We did process quite a few applications on the past few weeks. I just want to make sure that especially with elementary schools starting their lunches in October. Middle school and high school started lunch day one, and I I know that we just want to capture as much as possible. And even though the deadline is September thirtieth, as stated previously in our communication, if there's any hardship situations that those, those we will actually assess as we go on throughout the year. That concludes my report for tonight. Thank you.
I just had one question for Mr. Cruz with respect to the lunch program. How are we communicating that to the families to take advantage at part one and the second part of that? Is is there any opportunity of partnership with our friends at the town to also help them identify folks that might qualify?
Yes. So I'm glad you asked that, Mr. Baboon. So we've sent communication via Parent Square. Also, there's been the backpack notices that families receive by all these schools and the welcome backpacks. In addition to that, we do have a great relationship with the community center, Mary Farrell at the community center. She's the point there for any families that are in a situation of need. The community center is a great resource because they have also access and information to other resources, not just in Verona, but throughout the the actual county itself. And and even though we are not able to exchange information, but at least families are, do know they they receive a letter from us once they are approved. But I believe Mary Farrell, she also lets them know to ensure that that they actually apply for the free lunch app program here in Verona. And just to clarify, we do not participate in the National School Free Lunch Program. The National School Lunch Program is a federal program that sponsors free lunch for all qualifying students. If we did, we would be reimbursed. Right now, the the board actually sponsors the the cost of the free lunch. So it's a little over eight hundred dollars a year for a student lunch. And that's something that the board covers for every single student that qualifies. In the past, our our numbers has hovered around about twenty one percent of our student population, about twenty five students out of the entire population, and that's kind of been the number. It's been ticking up. But I haven't seen it go by past the the thirty number. So probably in the next meeting, I'll give an update on on where we are with free lunches. Or.
We have to do an RFP for.
So so the question is, the RFP, we we do have, this is our final year with our food lunch provider, Pomptonian, we are going to go out for an RFP in the spring. And then part of that process is also for us to make a decision on whether or not to participate in the National School Lunch going forward, based on the the actual increases and where we see that number trending. Thank you.
Thank you, Jorge. Moving on to, we don't have any committee reports this evening?
Buildings and grounds.
Oh, you did? Me?
Yeah, we met last week.
Okay, sorry. Okay, I didn't see it on here. Go ahead.
Yeah. So we we did have a buildings and grounds. Everything is in progress. We are putting up the maximum occupancy rating signs along the Verona High Press Box, which also encouraging or asking no hanging out or standing on along the stairs there. So when you are at various games, please heed those cautions. And then continuing to monitor various warranty areas for the multiple, multipurpose room and the office area in Lanning as well as the music room in HBW. One, one thing that did come up during our conversation was our Buildings and Grounds crew with ahead of particularly at the beginning of various sports seasons is to proactively monitor the the grounds. We did have some concerns from some folks at the tennis match where some of the prickly bushes were coming out a little too far, where people were trying to watch the tennis matches. We discussed this and it's a resource issue and we we have discussed some ways that the that the team will continue to be a little more proactive going forward on such issues. And that's pretty much our highlights at this time.
Question, I don't want to put anyone on the spot, but when we signed the agreement with the town to do, they were gonna do the lawn service and some other. Okay, but we've taken that, the mowing and and the other things off the plate of our maintenance guys. So it just seems like if we've taken away some stuff that that. I think we, did we add a maintenance person recently?
In the last three years, we had one maintenance or maybe.
So so we added a plumber. And then so we have one HVAC technician who actually became the assistant. So he's technically still the HVAC technician for the district. So he's, he's still doing HVAC eighty percent of his time and and then doing the assistant work about twenty percent of the time.
And just just one thing that a couple of people had mentioned to me, the sign out front, it seems like every other week there's a different panel that's going out or there's a different, is there somehow we can?
So I believe there, yeah, they, they reached out to the company that handles that and and it is a an issue that we we won't be able to do in in-house. So the the vendor is gonna have to come out. So I'll have an update. Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Frisella. I mean, that's been one of my my pet peeves is the buildings, grounds of what they look like. Our buildings, when you pull up to them, should look fantastic. And I know, Mr. Cruz, you've been seeing my emails and I'm gonna publicly say it, I've been quite disappointed with some of our way of our buildings outside have been looking for sporting events. Everyone knows when the start of school is. Everyone knows when our sporting events start. There should not be weeds. There should not be weeds growing through the bleachers. There should not be garbage under the bleachers. It just should not happen here in Verona. So they, I I understand they're gonna try and get like some kind of a protocol together, but that should have been, that should be doesn't, you just walk the buildings. Those buildings should be walked daily. The flags, I drove by the flags every school building before Labor Day. And FN Brown was shredding and Brookdale's was ripped that I went and bought one for at Brookdale. So these things need to be looked at constantly. We have to take pride in our exterior and interior of our buildings, so.
Yeah, so the emails that I also saw you send, they they got my attention. And yeah, I I agree with you. I also think that, you know, you know, I know mistakes might happen sometimes, but you know, when the board president wants to do an X meeting or a Y meeting, that's something that, you know, we're we we really got to insist happens. But I'm sure it will next time. But it definitely got our attention, Pam.
Thank you. Thank you for the report, Mr. Boone. Moving on to public comments on any agenda action items. If anyone has anything to speak on that we are voting on, please come to the podium and just state your name and you have three minutes. Seeing none, we're going to move on to our discussion and new business, old business.
I have, I have two things. The first is just a question. So it it's a, it's not a question where I know the answer to, it's a question where I don't. It seems like there, I see that we're putting together a cell phone policy, like committee where, you know, people can either volunteer or express that they're interested getting it, which is a good thing. But then you juxtapose with that with, you know, I get a whole lot of emails from the school saying, here's a new change of our cell phone policy. Here's a new change of our cell phone policy. Here's a new interpretation. And I guess my question is, if 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 we're soliciting people and saying, hey, come make, come help us make this new policy that we're going to present to the board and and suggested regulations within. Why are we doing all these measures now when they could very well change based on whatever recommendation is made by this policy committee, which has not even been formed yet? Because it's very likely that all these new rules and new interpretations of rules, emails we're getting like next year, they could all be removed because now we're gonna do something different and it kind of loses credibility. So help me understand that, please.
Uh, yeah, I can try. Because our current, our current procedures, and I want to call it a policy because I couldn't find it in board policy, was that each school laid out their own cell phone rule. And although Mr. Cogdill didn't know that we're working on this policy committee, he opted to enact his own rule with the understanding that it may change going forward. He is really gung ho about it and it's been a little bit of a rough start for the high school.
If I guess gung ho is is a subjective word, but is it possible that it's so gung ho where we wouldn't want an administrator to start enacting regulations that our policies don't enforce or or support? So is there?
We don't have a, we don't have a policy currently.
But there's got to be an electronic devices policy somewhere.
It is, but it's not about cell phone use. It's about, it, there's a bunch of, it's mentioned in a bunch of different policies, but nothing that specifically talks about student cell phone use.
And that's kind of uneasy too, because now we're we're saying, here's, here's what we're looking to do now, but we have no, like the policies are shielded. And once we don't have that, now we're 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 kind of running uphill here on this. And it's, I think it puts the district in a at best a precarious and very difficult position to win.
I'll speak to Mr. Cogdill tomorrow.
Thank you. And my next question, I was gonna do it during when we get to the B, but there there might be something I'm missing here. So I wanted to bring it up. So in B six, we're talking about the instructional empowerment Marzano evaluation thing. And and I know that I think it was like ten years ago where every district had to pick one of the big four ones or make your own. And and back then, it was very common to see ten thousand dollar trainings because it was new to everybody. So let's make sure we get everyone trained. But now CUSAC is just saying was, you you showed documentation that you got people trained and and that's become in in a whole lot of places, here's an email with the evaluation model. If 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 sign off or if you don't sign off to, you know, make an appointment with your supervisor to talk about the evaluation that you're going to be made, you know, be given. And it's, it's, it's a free way to 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 kind of organize that. This eleven thousand dollar price tag, if 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 if, is it every year we do in ten? What? So what is it? My look at my look at here.
This is a new model. This is new to everybody here.
So we like, oh, so we're doing a brand new, we're not doing the the thing we've done.
No, the thing we've done had sixty indicators. It was unten, untenable and very old and outdated.
Now my my point is is removed because it makes perfect sense. And that's it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Anyone else have anything they would like to discuss? I have a few things, but if anyone wants to go. You have something, Denise?
Okay, so was it last weekend already or two weekends ago when you and Mrs. Pomerizy were in the cornhole tournament for Verona Strong? They were.
Played great.
They did.
But they did better by far.
So thank you for for joining that. And at that event, it was, you know, raised money for Mallory, Mallory's Army, which they were there to speak at the event. And I believe they are going to be coming to our schools.
Uh, yes, Mallory's Army will be speaking to our students at HBW in the high school.
Great. That's wonderful. Today, I.
Evening as well.
There's no date yet for that yet.
No, I have.
Okay, that'll be in this school year.
Yes.
Hopefully, yes, yes. Today I went to, we were invited to the ribbon cutting up at the Community Garden by HBW. So I attended that. It was a very nice event, got to tour the the area. So thank you to Carol Thomas and all everyone on that committee for everything they've done there. I just told them they're not taking any more space away from our our track. And let's see, I just wanted to, Mallory's Army, and tonight is senior night for boys soccer. They were playing when I I went out there for seniors night. They were losing one nothing. So hopefully they came back to beat Cedar Grove. That's all I have. That's all I have. Anyone else? Thank you. Moving on, do we have anything for correspondence? Moving on, we are going to go into our resolutions. I need a motion, please, to approve our personnel resolutions A one through A eight.
Moved.
Moved by Mr. Waka, seconded by by Mrs. Rosella. Are there any discussion? Mr. Cruz, if you could please call roll.
Mr. Waka?
Yes.
Mrs. Rosella?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
And Mr. Boone?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our education, I need a motion to approve resolutions B one through B eight. Motion by
I'll move.
Mr. Boone, seconded by
I'll second.
Mrs. Farrar, are there any discussions? Mr. Cruz, if you could please call roll.
Mr. Waka? Yes. Mrs. Rosella?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our athletics co-curricular, I need a motion to approve resolutions C one to C two. Motion by Mr. Waka, seconded by Mrs. Rosella. Any discussion?
I love that there's a yo-yo club.
Can I just say, the students that went to Mr. Galbercheck actually had a slide deck presentation about why they need this yo-yo club. It was adorable.
So this was organic idea?
Oh, yeah, this came from the kids.
Oh, wonderful.
Where did they get that idea from?
They've been doing yo-yos for a couple of years and they want to have a formal club. It's adorable.
Uh, that is.
That's great. Mr. Cruz, if you could please call roll.
Yes. Uh, Mr. Waka?
Yes.
Mrs. Rosella?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar? Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
Mr. Boone?
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. There are none for facilities. Moving on to our finance resolutions, I need a motion to approve resolutions E one through E six. Motion by
I'll move it.
Mrs. Rosella, seconded by
I'll second.
Mr. Boone. Any discussions?
Uh, just for E five, I think that's actually in the wrong portion. I, I would have put that under governance, but that's just, and policy? Or is that, or did that, was that where we had it before?
I think we had there because it's a finance.
Okay, but just, uh, okay, but just to explain for those who weren't part of this, we sent our initial resolution to NJ SBA. They sent us back with a couple corrections. I like the term form over function um in terms of these corrections. So they have been made. The substance of the policy is the same. It's exactly the same. There was just some like.
The only language that they wanted was resolve that this, the last line in the resolution resolve that this resolution be placed on the agenda for consideration at the December seventh, twenty twenty four delegate assembly. That's the only thing that was missing.
Right, yeah. So they just, again, form of substance.
Do we know how many district, excuse me, do we know how many districts are you know, um, adopting this stance?
Just ask, we're presenting.
Yeah.
No, but I mean, no, but I mean.
No, so we're gonna, so the way that this will work is we'll present it to the delegate assembly. So there'll be a delegate representative from throughout the state.
Yeah, from each district. So there's five hundred and ninety nine school districts plus charter schools and I think approved special ed schools probably also have delegates there somewhere.
If it gets put on the agenda for the meeting, we'll be able to present it. And then the delegates will vote on it, at which time it can then go and.
Okay, I misunderstood the direction and the flow.
Yeah, and then it, it becomes part of the big packet of stuff that the NG, NJ SBA then advocates for um in this, at the state level for hoping, for hoping changes of how the pilot funds are allocated. So that's really it.
Thank you.
Mr. Cruz, if you could please call roll.
Mr. Waka?
So I'm gonna ask, we've, just for me personally to vote separately for E five uh against the consent and um I, I appreciate everything um the fellow board members have done to advocate this and philosophically one hundred percent, I believe the pilot should be shared. I just don't have the faith that the NJ SBA has the, the care nor the will to, to fight for this to the, the level that we want them to. Uh, so for that reason, I'm gonna vote no, but I, it's, 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 it's total respect for all the work you guys have put in.
So you're voting no, just on E five?
E five, no, everything else.
Okay, uh, Mrs. Rosella?
Yes.
Mrs. Farrar?
Yes.
Mrs. Prisco?
Yes.
And Mr. Boone?
Uh, I'm sorry, just for clarity, we're voting here on the whole slate.
On, on everything.
Okay, yes.
Um, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you. And we don't have anything for governance and policy. So now moving on to our public comments. I don't have my little speech, but if anyone at the, would like to come to the podium, please just state your name and you will have three minutes.
Hi, Laura Silagato. Um, I just have a quick question. Um, in the July second meeting, um, Ms. Farrar brought up the possibility of the Board exploring um, an RFP or hiring a consulting firm or forming some sort of, of um committee to evaluate the district's safety and security practices and identify needs and areas um of improvement. Um, I wanted to thank you first of all for bringing that to the table. I think it's a really um proactive idea that um as a parent who has a lot of um safety and security concerns, um, I appreciate that that was being brought up. Um, but there haven't been any further public comments um in any of the meetings from that time. So just wondering if there's any updates, um, if there's been any discussions
Yes.
among the Board that you can share um and just.
So I spoke with Director Gale, who is uh the Director of School Safety and Security um at the Department of Education. He also works for Homeland Security. Um, and he advised um that private consultants probably aren't the way to go, but that they are going to come up and do an audit for us.
Okay.
So, and I also wanted to speak, I should have done this earlier, but I got caught up in our scores and our, our goals. Um, we did reach out and have a, a presentation by Sendrex, which is the company that got all the press after Appalachia's a school shooting with the lanyard. Um, unfortunately, I don't know how school districts afford that. It would be for, it for us to implement a fifty thousand dollar installation and fifty thousand dollars a year to uh maintain it, uh, which is a, our, our uh Raptor program, which is our visitor maintenance, our visitor um uh management. Our LET program, which is our panic button that we do have, and every, every teacher has the ability to call lockdown or to hit the panic button. Um, not a lanyard, but they all have access to it and uh share nine one one, which is our uh management uh communications with uh the police. Costs us about sixteen thousand, sixteen thousand dollars a year, and part of that is shared with the Verona Police. But um, uh, Mr. Bellage, our, our Chief Technology Officer, did meet with a, a different company, uh, Alcatel. Alcatel that has a similar product that we are investigating as well.
That's really great to know. Thank you for sharing that.
You're welcome.
The follow-up, I, I think too, um I, at that same meeting, we talked about the, the, having like the tabletop exercises. So maybe before our next meeting, if we can meet as a security committee to kind of talk through that a little bit.
Interestingly, um, I had a conversation today uh with one of our teachers who is also um our mayor. Um, and he is uh the liaison for the OEM.
Okay.
And uh he actually offered to set up a tabletop um uh for um our school administrators.
Okay.
Um, as, because that's what he does in his role. So he's very comfortable with that. And CRG, the folks that did our mapping, uh, our school mapping, also are gonna come out and do a tabletop.
So would, would we, is that, is that happening in a time period that we would wait for that to happen first and then we're, and then come together as a security committee or will we?
Uh, we should probably come together as a security.
Yeah.
And then, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You could also turn key to the highlights of my presentation at school boards.
Gonna be there taking notes in the front.
Thank you, Ms. Silagato, for your comments. Does anyone else like to come up? Hi. Closing confidential, um, I mean, closing our, moving on to our agenda. I need a motion to adjourn. Motion by Mrs. Rosella, seconded by
I'll second.
Mr. Boone, all in favor? Thank you. Our next public meeting will be on Tuesday, October fifteenth, twenty twenty four. Confidential session at six and public session at seven PM in the Learning Commons. Um, and that is it. It is eight oh two and we are adjourned.